Thank you all very much. My name is Claire Brundt and I'm one of the conveners of the Gosford Waterfront Alliance Inc. and somebody who's very interested in this issue. Welcome and thank you all very much for coming. Before I proceed too much further, it's my pleasure to invite Kevin or Gabby, as some of you have probably done, who to come and do a welcome to country. And many of you will know Gabby as an Aboriginal educator, artist, performer, and heritage consultant. And in fact, he consulted with John McInerney on the 2003 plan. And he's worked across the community for many, many years. So, thank you Gabby and welcome.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you for inviting me here to be part of this and to do welcome to country. These are my ancestral lands also from my mother's side, which we call Awaba in language. And a lot of people might know it today as Darkenyang, but that name come about much later, but we traditionally call the area Awaba. So I'd like to say yama and yaraba, bingu, and welcome here ladies and gentlemen. And to our traditional lands, from the Diribbun, which is a traditional name for the Hawkesby River, to the Meong, which is a traditional name for the Hunter River, and the Awaba, which is a traditional name for Lake Macquarie, and from the sacred mountain of Mount Yango to the sea. On behalf of my ancestors here in country and our people here and elders of past and present and our youth, I'd like to say yama and welcome. A song that I'd like to sing in our local Awaba language means that we, it's, I think, appropriate to what's happening here tonight. It means that we come together, we share together as one under the sun, the moon, the stars. You can do na ya niya barya, na ya niya mana niya, mana niya, mana niya. You can do na ya niya barya, na ya niya mana niya, mana niya, mana niya. Pan elga dangulang, pan elga dangulang, pan elga dangulang. You can do na ya niya barya, na ya niya mana niya, mana niya, mana niya. You can do na ya niya barya, na ya niya mana niya, mana niya, mana niya. Pan elga dangulang, pan elga dangulang, pan elga dangulang. Yama and welcome.
Thank you very much Gabby, that was beautiful. We are gathered here because perhaps we have not learnt from the wisdom of our elders past and present, and we have not perhaps treated the land in the way in which we should. A number of you were at the meeting we held in November last year, and since then, of course, a lot has happened. One of the things that has happened is, of course, the development applications have come through for both the ATO slash DOMA site on the first third of that block. And I've just noticed recently that the EOI has been put out by the property New South Wales for the sale, or the, looking for a commercial partner for the second two-thirds with the guaranteed government tenant, of course, who is the State Finance Office. As you know, the 2010 Our City, Our Destiny Master Plan had quite a different vision for that. And of course, we all know that over the, since 2010, there's been a litany of all sorts of things have happened, and which has resulted in us arriving at the position today where we face the prospect of having two office blocks on the Gosford waterfront, as opposed to having the Performing Arts Centre and the office blocks very welcome and appropriately located somewhere else. That is where we're at. The Gosford Waterfront Alliance formed officially back in April. We are an incorporated group, we are only small, and effectively, we exist just to look at that area. And so, there are a lot of other issues within Gosford, such as the Kibbleplex Building and other things. We won't be taking those on, however, individually, numbers of us are interested, and so we'll be looking at those issues separately. But our focus really has to be quite singular, and it is just on that Gosford waterfront area. We had some success with the Joint Regional Planning Panel. The first hearing, or the first determination, DOMA had to go back. And at the second one, a number of, the consent was given, but with quite a few, I suppose, considerations that had to be made. And I was very interested, I wasn't there, but in the report from that, from the numbers of people who had been there, was in fact, the, that Gary Fielding and others, who is the Chair, had actually been quite critical, really, of Gosford's failure to implement and to put into practice the Our City, Our Destiny Master Plan, and in fact, to embed that within the LEP. So it became a much more binding document, and that's, of course, the situation that we find ourselves in. Numerous of you have done many things. Thank you to all of you who have shared Facebook pages and Facebook links, to all of you who are, of course, part of the many other groups over the years, many of you from the Performing Arts Community, lovers and performers, and you have really shared that and come along to support us. And I recognise all those people who are representing the individual groups and the community groups who have worked across that. I'd also like to acknowledge that we have Jane and Amy, who've come from Cathy Smith's office, we have Anne Charlton with us, Anne, of course, stood as the candidate in the seat of Robertson, and did come very close, our commiserations. Anne, I have apologies from Hillary Morris, who was a former councillor and a Greens candidate, and Vicky Scott, who many of you know, who's very active on community issues. She is a former councillor as well, she sent her apologies for the meeting, as did Peter Brandon, the President of the Conservatorium of Music. So I have those apologies, and I'm sure there will be others as well, but they're the official apologies that I have, that I would just like to note. We are here tonight to hear John McInerney speak. And John, of course, was the gentleman who put together the 2003 plan. We've had a lot of plans in Gosford. We've spent a lot of money on this topic. And I think we all thought, when finally it came to 2010, which of course was a build on the 2003 plan, that in fact, perhaps some of the, of the planning and the excellent consultation, which Gosford Council and others can be rightfully proud of for that document, took place, that in fact, it would be over, however, that was not the case. And somebody who's really been involved in all of that, who's been, I think, part of the fabric of the Gosford community for so, so many years, and who remains engaged and remains active, I speak of the former Mayor Malcolm Brooks, who still to this day has his vision and is absolutely convinced that we can do something really positive here. And I think it's a total credit to Malcolm, when he could be putting his feet up in the slippers on the lounge chair on a cold night, that he has in fact, come out. And I call on Malcolm to introduce John McInerney. Thank you Malcolm.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen. It's certainly a pleasure for me to come here and meet John again after so many years. He's a professional architect for 42 years. He's did training as a planner in the UK, in London. He's travelled the world, and he's a man of worldwide experience. He's also been recently the Deputy Lord Mayor of the Sydney City Council, working with Claver Moor for four or five years, I think, eight, I've been told. And I first met John when he was appointed by the Labor Minister Craig Knowles, the Minister for Planning. And being a Liberal man and a Liberal Mayor of the Gosford City Council, when he was asked to prepare a master plan for Gosford, I was a little suspicious, as you would gather from a politician on the other side of the house. And when I first met him, I was very cautious in what I said, and watched him and how he went about the work that he was to do. And I came back after two or three months, a very, what's the word? But he was a man I found that was very methodical in what he'd done. He was, in every way that he took to the job, I came to admire him and still do. There was no party politics in it when he sat down to look at the plan for Gosford. He did it in a very professional manner. And I think we're lucky here tonight to have somebody to come with us to take an interest in what we're about to achieve, I hope we're about to achieve, because we'll keep pressing on, we'll keep fighting on, to achieve that the primary school site in Gosford comes back to, as John said in his plan, a cultural precinct. Would you please welcome John McInerney?
Good evening, good evening, and thanks for coming out on such a cold night. Malcolm didn't mention that I'm from Melbourne, so for me, this is just a normal night. I should also recognise Marcel Hoff, who, it was her personal intervention really that brought me up here. Marcel and I were both on the Sydney City Council for eight and a half years, in fact, and we formed a strong bond. Our closest bond was formed fighting the Barangaroo development, which unfortunately has grown to be totally out of proportion, and the final insult was the Packer Casino, which we're now having to put up with, it's 60 storeys high. So if you think you've got problems here, Barangaroo can double it or treble it, in fact. But actually, before I was a councillor with the City of Sydney, I worked as a city planner there. I came from Melbourne, in fact, to be the city planner of the City of Sydney in 1990, and worked there as city planner for five years, four of those under Frank Sartor, and so I've survived. But after 96, I left the council and formed a consulting firm, City Plan Services. In fact, and as that consulting town planner, I was asked by Craig Knowles, as was mentioned by Malcolm, to come up to Gosford and work on a strategic plan for Gosford city centre. At that time, the council was deep enmeshed in the problem of spur best. And oddly enough, I noticed the buildings haven't really changed in the period of 13 years, and it's a bit hard for me to imagine that it was 13 years ago, but it is, and perhaps it says many things, but I won't go into that. But nevertheless, the reason I was up here was then, was facilitated or started by the spur best debate. I was asked by Craig Knowles to come and prepare a statutory plan for the City of Gosford, which I did over the ensuing year, and completed a strategy introduction, and then an LEP and a DCP. And that was put into statutory form in 2004 by Frank Sartor, who was the Minister at the time. In that report, which I did in 2003, 3-4, I drew attention to the importance of the spur best, of the school site. I think it was described in the report as the jewel in the crown of sites in Gosford, and I still see it as the jewel in the crown. The potential of that site is, has one of the greatest potentials of the central coast, to come up with a design or a solution which takes advantage of the site and really maximises what potential is there. We recognised that back in 2003, and we did go further and suggest, as Malcolm also touched on, it would be an ideal site for a music or arts educational centre. At the time, we really didn't think that the school would be able to be moved, and we talked of retaining it as a school, but making it into a school of music, so that you'd have a sort of conservatorium, which would be a partner to the Sydney Conservatorium, and we thought, now that's the right way to go. Which would also include the Performing Arts Centre that Malcolm has talked about. And at that time, the site was, of course, zoned for school purposes. I've touched on the LEP and DCP becoming law by Frank Sartor in 2004. There was then some shuffling around by Frank Sartor as the Minister, which he was very good at. And we found that really nothing much had happened until the new planning work which occurred towards the 2009 and 2010. And the concept of Our City, Our Destiny, which was touched on again by Claire earlier, seemed to me to be the, absolutely the right way to go. I thought it was a good plan, it built on what I had worked on in 2003 and 2004, and really, at that time, 2010, 2011, I honestly thought Gosford was going to really grab hold of its future and go ahead full steam. What subsequently happened, and again Claire touched on it briefly, has really been a lesson in, I don't know what, in bad government, inadequate planning, insufficient care given by the elected representatives of you as the people of Gosford. All the things that go, can go wrong, seem to have gone wrong. So we're left now, oh, I meant to mention that the plan, the 2010 plan, also enshrined the idea of a cultural precinct, which included a performing arts centre. But at that point, around 2010, 2011, a fundamental error occurred, and it actually occurred a little later, that that concept or that ideal of an entertainment precinct was not put into the statutory controls. So that ultimately, the statutory control on that whole school site was called a B4 control, which really is known as a mixed-use zone, which means, in effect, that you can put anything there you like. And of course, one looks at why that was done. It wasn't done by accident, it wasn't done through lack of knowledge. It was entirely done because that zoning would make more money for the government. And I'm not going to mince words, clearly, that attempt to capitalise and make as much money out of this community as possible has been the driving force behind the government in its various forms. And unfortunately, the local government end of that doesn't seem to have been able to resist that pressure. The closure of the school in 2013 really became the crunch point at which all of this started to come together. And there was the opportunity again to zone back to a cultural precinct, didn't happen. And unfortunately, as I said, the B4 mixed-use zone was chosen, and it maximised the value to the state government. I should mention too, that with the return of an elected council, which I understand is next year, it seems to me that one of the first things that that council should do is to rezone that site back into a cultural precinct. Now, there'll be a lot of water to go under the bridge between now and then, and hopefully there'll be enough left of the site, because there may well be some inevitable decisions that are made. But I think there'll be sufficient land left to retain that, or to reinstate that cultural precinct zoning, and then move ahead again from there. Of course, the argument against it will be the same as what I mentioned earlier. The cultural precinct doesn't make a great deal of money for the state government. So you'll be fighting a state government which, to my knowledge, is desperately trying to sell off almost everything that it owns, and I, I say that coming from a, I live in Miller's Point in the city, so I've been fighting the wholesale of the suburb there. The whole of Miller's Point is actually being sold, so, and there's some wonderful buildings, one of which is a building called Sirius, but I won't get into that now, but that's my day-to-day operation at the moment, when I'm not down here in Gosford. Now, the importance of the zoning action can in fact be seen in some comments made by the Chair of the Joint Regional Planning Panel, the JRPP. And I'd like to quote from his comments, because they're so telling and so, there's something else that I'll touch on later on, but they're so important. He said, and I'm quoting a transcript of what Chairman Fielding said at the JRPP, "Unfortunately, the planning intention through the Our City, Our Destiny Master Plan has not been carried through in a statutory planning sense. Had the master plan been carried through, then what would have been created would have been an attractive performing arts precinct." And if that's the word, or they are the words of the person who then approved the ATA office. In that same hearing, there was a statement by another member of the panel, which I think is very true and is quite courageous. This statement was by Member Greenwald, who was in fact, a dissenting member from the decision to approve the ATA office. And I'll quote from him, "The full tenancy by the tax office does not give activation to the street front, and the building should comply fully with the planning objectives." Here he's referring to other matters. "The variation in car parking is 12%, and a large variation, and the building should fully comply, because there is opportunity to design a complying development. Therefore, I am against the motion to approve." Unfortunately, he was overruled, as the motion was carried three to one. The critical part, I think, in his words, is that the tax office does not give activation to the area. And I don't think anyone in their right mind... I don't think anyone in their right mind would in fact argue that that is the case. I have seen, in fact, I saw today some detailed plans of that, blank walls, so-called shop fronts, but behind the glass are just offices. So there's no sense of shop, there's no sense of a pleasure of pedestrian walking past. It's a bulky, unattractive building, self, an introverted building, where the tax office looks into itself and not out to the community. And because it's like that, then the community won't look into that and won't feel that that building is part of this community. So unfortunately, that's been approved at this stage, with some variations, but essentially, that's where we're at, I guess. But as I mentioned a little earlier, I think there's one matter that can come up from those statements of the members of the panel. "I believe they contain the basis for a judicial review of the decision." What those statements say are, that the chairman is not happy with what he's doing, one of the members thinks it's part, probably illegal, the other member just went, or the other two members presumably just went along with, in fact, there was only one other member, no, there were two other members, sorry, went along with the decision. I think that's the opportunity for what's called a judicial review. It means that... And that would require a fairly experienced legal operator to put that action into place. It's not necessarily an expensive action to take in the first instance, to get that up and in front of court. It may prove to be a more expensive operation as time goes on, because I imagine you would find the state government taking an opposing point of view and defending the JRPP. But nevertheless, I think that is an opportunity that should be taken up, and I would recommend that that should be taken up as soon as possible, with whatever resources you can muster on the legal side. Now, perhaps I could go to, oh, sorry, the other thing on that matter too, is that while it may not succeed to the extent of fully overturning the AOT decision, what it will do is give you time. These processes, by the time the court looks at whether the case is made or whether it's not made, then it goes into a judicial review process. Those of you who have been through this process know that that can drift on from six months to a year, and during that time, there are many political things that can happen, there's much community organisation, pressure, et cetera, et cetera. Time, to me, at the moment, seems to be a critical factor in your position. You need time for people to understand what's been going on, for action to be taken, for politicians to get the message that this has to be changed, and generally to aim towards the objectives of the 2010 Master Plan. Time is of the essence, so again, I just stressed, please start that lobbying, that action for the judicial review. Now, I should say perhaps what should be the objectives of the group as you move forward. They're my suggestions, by the way, of course, because I'm not part of your group, I'm just observing the situation as it stands. Firstly, I think you should have an objective, that the ATO approval should be withdrawn by the government. That's something they can do, something that they have caused, something they can pull back from, and it's something that I would aim at as one of the first objectives of your group. Get the approval withdrawn, get the government to take back what's happened. If that cannot be done for legal reasons, and there's probably a fair chance it won't be able to be done, I believe it would be possible to redesign the proposal, that's the ATO proposal, from what I've seen, to take advantage of the underused height. There's approximately, because the ATA only needed, I think it was three or four storeys, the potential, the controls on the site allow for another four to six storeys on top of the ATA office. So it may be possible to redesign the proposal, to take advantage of that unused height, to come up with a proposal that might, in a sense, improve or increase the value of the property, at the same time, opening up the idea of perhaps the lower two floors becoming entertainment-type, when I say entertainment, I mean restaurants, cafes, cultural uses, generally within the context of the entertainment precinct. So that's a fairly practical redesign, which could be done, and could, in fact, with the assistance of the council, and hopefully, members of the community, that could actually be looked at right now. Secondly, I think what should be done by the government, that further applications and sales should cease immediately. Other possible cultural uses, and all the ideas that have been, that have been brought forward by this action of the government, really need time to be discussed, they need, they don't need the pressure of the sign on the site saying, "Tenders requested, we want to sell this as soon as possible." And you don't need the pressure coming from a very aggressive group called Properties New South Wales. I'm not sure how many of you know this group, I personally know it well from my experience in Miller's Point. They're a group set up, as someone once said, of out-of-work real estate agents, who were given the objective of selling everything they could that wasn't nailed down. And they're not my words, I would never say that, but I would repeat it. Now, that group are the driving force behind the sale of these properties. Property New South Wales, their objective, make money for the government at any cost. So it's going to be difficult, but that should be stopped, and while all the other possibilities are explored on the site. And I guess this is where politics come in. The owners of the site, that is the government, must be persuaded to accept the possibility of a reduced price for their offers. In other words, treasury, which is a driving force in the current government, not that it wasn't in the previous government, I must say. Treasury in New South Wales has been a dominant force way, way back, for many, many years. But those forces to aim for maximising the price on that site must be persuaded to accept the possibility of a reduced price, so that... the possibility of a reduced price so that the wider community objectives can be achieved. It's more important in the long run for the community objectives to be expressed on that site than it is for the government to get a windfall for the next sporting stadium that they want to build up in the centre of Sydney. And I didn't really mean that against any of the sporting people that I know, but the money is going towards projects which you undoubtedly read about, one of which, if Clovermore were here today, a good friend of mine, she'd tell you about the $17 billion that's being spent on West Connects, an extraordinarily over-expensive and almost totally unnecessary piece of infrastructure. But these are the sort of things that the government is spending effectively, then your money, which they're taking off your site on, and all of that has to be changed Convincing all of these, the government agents and particularly Property New South Wales will really require a considerable community pressure by the groups that are here tonight. By being here tonight, you of course have commenced in many ways this coalescing of feeling about what should happen here. And I think, I've seen a few stories in the newspapers, and there was something on television this morning, this is the way a community movement starts, and I think it can keep going. We'll have to, to build up that pressure to convince the government to change its mind on these sites. And we'll also have to keep going because it'll take several years for this whole process to find its way out to a conclusion. The key players in this process and players that you will have to influence will in fact be the new council administrator, who now administers the two joint councils, the Minister for Planning, Rob Stokes, who in my experience is a great sort of guy and comes from a community background in many ways, and has planning qualifications as well, the Minister for Property, who is in charge of Property New South Wales, or alternatively, and this is probably not a bad place to start, the Premier himself. I think this is important enough to go right up to the Premier. The difficulty will be to get to him, of course, and I think Malcolm has already tried and perhaps has yet to get a result, but to get to the, you keep trying. The Premier ultimately is the one who decides what the ministers do and say. If you can get to the Premier and convince him of the rightness of your position, then that's the right way to go. And of course, the very Premier, after the Greyhounds and a few other things, may well be looking for a bit of good news. So perhaps this could be the good news he needs. So I might stop at that point and leave it open for questions.
Thank you very much, John. Fabulous, I was taking notes flat out there, as lots of other people were too. Just so interesting to reflect on all those things, isn't it? And to think at which point you suddenly look back and go, oh my goodness, how much has in fact been taken? Because it's an incremental thing. I always say it's like peeling an onion, you know, and all of a sudden you get and there isn't any actually left. And I think we really are at that point. A couple of things before, I'm actually, Phil Bly is going to speak to us, and Phil had the distinction of working with John when John did his consultation in 2003 and 2004 and did his work with council. But I also just had one more apology. Dave Abraham, who many of you know, Digi Dave, who of course has been instrumental in getting the NBN and things here, he's been in the Gibson Desert for two weeks, and I don't think he's found his way home yet. So he is also an apology. We are hoping, as he is a valued member of the GWA Inc., that he does in fact return at some point in time. The other thing I'd like to do is really comment on note Bob Fitzgerald, who's here again helping us out, and any of you who saw the video footage from the last meeting, it was brilliantly edited, it was brilliantly done, and so a big thank you to Bob as well for your ongoing and continuing support. So thank you very much. Phil Bly, who is just down here, Phil just wants to talk to us a little bit about some of the indigenous and cultural aspects of the land of which we speak as well. Thank you, Phil.
Look, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I'd like to thank Yolanda for inviting me to come and talk to you. I would like to clarify that I was part of the consult, consolative process when John McInerney was putting together the plan for the Gosford Waterfront. I was a part of the Arimba Protocol at the time, and I'll talk a little bit to that. I've got some speaking notes here. I had a little bit of a nervous moment earlier this time tonight because I was going through my notes, which I knocked up this afternoon, and the computer went out. It's working, so. But yeah, first of all, I'd just like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land and pay my respects to elders past and present. I would like to also acknowledge my ancestry. Both my parents are Aboriginal people from Queensland and at a time when relations up there weren't that great at all. And both my parents as children were taken away and put on to Palm Island where they spent a number of years. My mum sixteen years there and my dad three years. There's another story to that that I might share with some people later, at another time, Gabby, as I think has some insights into that with my other side of my heritage. But I was really floored by the decision of government to build the ATO on the site in question at the old school site. So around 2003 was the first time that I did meet John, and I recall, I'll share this story quickly with you, I'll recall that I was at Gosford City Council, and I was actually sitting, John may not recall this, but I was actually sitting next to him, and the conversation was directed towards cultural aspects. And then John said, well, how do I get in touch with the Aboriginal people? And Russell, a friend of mine who was part of the Arimba Protocol, said, he said, he's sitting right next to you. But what John didn't know was that was no accident. So I'm a foundation member of the Arimba Protocol Partners, and that was a partnership between community and government that primarily was formed to provide a respectful forum at which serious community issues could be examined and resolved as informed consensus through dialogue. So why did we form this collective, this group? Because we felt that very strongly that we as a collective should control, and there it goes. Can't believe that. Yeah, no, that's died on me. I had some really good notes there. But the, we as a collective, I think we felt very strongly that we should have control of our destiny and that we should shape our own future and shape our own identity on the Central Coast. And it was very important that we would form a process whereby lots of different voices would be heard, and we as Aboriginal people were part of that process as well. And hence the Arimba Protocol, informed consensus through dialogue, and it was a great privilege to be part of that process. I found it to be very ethical. And I must also say that the consultation process that we engaged with John McInerney was also a very ethical process as well. And we found John to be a very good man, we found him to be his own man, and we were rather surprised to, we felt as a group that the, later, that the plan was shelved. And so hence we're in the situation that we're in now. The situation was that everything that Gabby and I, we've worked together for many years within the community and everything that we get involved in, is, we work towards reconciliation, and we all, so it was a great opportunity for us to be involved in that process and to have our views recognised, and we also felt that our views were being sort of built into the planning process. So it really did mean a lot to us. We felt very strongly about the type of development that we thought should go on the waterfront. The waterfront, we felt, was a place for art and culture, and in some sense, the school was in the right place. So to have it replaced by an ATO office was something of a shock. And so I might ask Gab to come up and give me some of her hand here. Would you like to maybe say a few words as well about our involvement in the Gosford Waterfront? And, yeah.
All right, go ahead. Yeah, so... I'll just try and get the notes. Oh, okay. Yeah, I actually met with John many years back too in regards to, we'd actually looked at the culture of the land, the spirituality of the land, and how different things flowed into the bay here on the waterfront. For generations, our people lived in this land, you know, in a very much spiritual, cultural way. And I always say that, you know, for, I can walk up the main street of this city and not see one thing that's representing of anything of Aboriginal culture. There's not one thing in the architecture of anything of Aboriginal culture. We have the oldest sites of rock art anywhere on earth, but we don't see any of that in the culture of our cities. And you might see it, which is now, you know, brought out in the city of Sydney in regards to renaming sites of significance in Sydney back to their Aboriginal names. This area, we called Norara in language, which is now a suburb, but not a lot of people would even realise that this area was called Norara. Arimba, meaning the sacred circles of where the people gathered in ceremony and performed and danced, and all part of, you know, what we see as culture. Culture is, you know, the way we live in regards to our cultural practices and traditions and customs and such, which is any society on earth. And it's our people that have lived here for thousands of generations and lived with the natural environment. And it's spiritually healing, and it's that connection. You know, we mentioned a very much a famous saying now that's become part of the Five Lands Walk in connecting people to people and people to place. And we live on this magnificent harbour here in Gosford, and yet everything that's ever been built there, like the current restaurant that's now on the waterfront, keeps failing. Everything that's been put there has failed. We say it's a spiritual burden that's, or a spiritual, how can you say, something that's put there in, and not respect to what the spirit of the land is itself. And this artery, it's actually buried beneath the ground, this artery that is right next to the school, which is a natural flow of that artery into the bay has been covered. And I now see Kibble Park with, you know, I think that we may have influenced that when previously we talked about how we can bring the water back to the surface, because there's a creek running under Kibble Park, which is now an imitation, which is brought to the surface in Kibble Park, and which is an imitation of that creek that flows underneath. And I think what I see as this ATO building is environmental stress. You know, it's an environmental stress to us spiritually, physically and mentally, as all of us, you know, people who live in this region. And that's what it is, it's environmental stress. And because it doesn't fit in with the culture and the spirituality of what this waterfront really means. I see that, when I say we have, you know, sites of significance which tell stories of the land and the creation of it, and what it means to, as human beings, to be physically, mentally and spiritually, you know, connected to that, and to teach our children what this environment really means to us in protection and preservation. And I see the arts as that, you know, it's always been a voice of the people against, you know, political agendas, I suppose, in regards to people just getting out there and, you know, saying yes to anything for votes as such. And this is what I see of the current government and the current people who, you know, well in regards to have approved this building to go ahead, was that those people aren't thinking about the people of this land and the people of this, you know, area. The Central Coast was a place that, between what we say two penal colonies in Sydney and Newcastle, and this was regarded as just bush and scrub. But then it became what they called, I think Spike Milligan mentioned it, as the above-ground cemetery, at a place of retirement for elderly people as such. But the beauty of this place is unbelievable. You know, we have mountains, we have rivers, we have lakes, we have wetlands, we have beaches, we have all these features, rainforests, right in smack bang in middle of the two biggest cities in Australia, well, in New South Wales. And yet we carry such beauty, and we're less than an hour from both of them. And I see that, you know, an eyesore, you know, we've got this beautiful eyesore, it's a beautiful eyesore, and we should, you know, celebrate this in a way that it should be given back to the people where it belongs.
Yeah, the point that I, one of the points that I did want to make was the fact that I think this goes right to the core of our identity on the Central Coast. We have things being done to us all the time, and this is just another imposition, I feel. And I think that we should be shaping our own identity, and we as Aboriginal people are part of that identity, and we have a voice. And, you know, we're very grateful that we had a voice within the Arimba Protocol, and, you know, we just felt that that wasn't listened to once more. But I think there's, the rewards that this development offers do come at a cost, and that's a cost to, you know, a cultural cost and a cost to the community, the social cost as well.
Thank you to both Phil and to Gabby. I now have a new appreciation and a new set of words to use, in fact, for how I actually live here, so thank you, thank you for that. I'm now going to ask if anyone has comments and questions. Ange, is our microphone working? Can you see her? Brilliant, thank you very much. Do ask you to use the microphone because it is much more helpful for our videoing. So if people have questions, I'm going to ask John to come up, and if people have questions and/or comments, that would be... And if people have questions and/or comments, that would be fantastic. Ange, have we got one that we're starting off with down there? Yes, gentleman here.
Sorry, I'm not experienced at all with these things, but just listening to the speakers from tonight, what struck me the most was the Aboriginal culture essence. I feel that in any of our approaches to the powers that be, we should have an element of what Gabbin more or less put together. I don't know how to phrase that, but I think that's a very vital part here.
Yes, it's very appropriate because the government in Canberra, and particularly the new Prime Minister, is committed to reconciliation. I mean, it has been, what it has, it has now become a very central part of the federal government's activities. I know the local council for many years has been attempting to develop Aboriginal connections and an understanding of the indigenous role here. I don't quite know how to take this forward, but really what ought to happen is that the Arimba Protocol really needs to be reinvested into any future plans in that area, because so far it's just been entirely lost. And so the work that we did in 2003, assuming that we do get further work done on the site, I think the Arimba Protocol has to be related to what happens there. As I recall, it was really about reinvigorating the fact that water of Gosford comes through the city centre and out alongside those sites. And then, as some of you may or may not know, but it actually travels in a very large concrete drain at the moment, which is a bit unfair on that wonderful watercourse which the Aboriginal elders understood and knew well as to be the way in which the whole of the Bay Area was fed. And that really needs to be reinvigorated, re-expressed in a designed form. And so the people understand the central part of the Aboriginal culture as they move forward. And it's something, not that they should do reluctantly, but it's there. We as a new nation have never really understood how much we can gain from a true understanding of the Aboriginal culture. It can give us so much.[1229.01][1229.01](APPLAUSE). And it has to be in things that are physical. It's no good wandering around saying, you know, he's a good guy, or I'm happy with him, or he can do other things or whatever. It has to be physically expressed, as you were saying. And one of the first ways would be to liberate that water that currently goes down Vega Street in a drain, I think it's about five or six metres wide. It's really quite enormous, and that's the original water that flowed through Gosford, actually.
Yeah, because it's, you know, the artery, I suppose, of Gosford, it's the main artery, it's in regards to the heartbeat of the land. And also, I'm not sure whether the land itself or the ATO site is crown land? Is it crown? No. Oh, it is? Oh, it is? Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, just under, you know, I don't know, with native title and crown land under the Land Rights Act, that we can, as Aboriginal people, claim crown land as such. And I did an archaeological survey there two months ago, as I am a registered traditional owner of these lands. And through that process, they had me, well, I had to go and inspect that land too, and I found, I did found artefacts as such on the land itself, and which a report I wrote into the archaeologists that did the surveys too, in regards that, you know, there is the possibility in regards to finding artefacts. They found European artefacts in the old school site, and I'm not sure what they did with them, and back into the convict days, basically European artefacts. But also they found, I found, you know, different Aboriginal artefacts scattered around near the site too in pit digs that we did two months ago.
On the ATO site?
On the ATO, sorry. Yes.
It's one gentleman down the back there.
Excuse me. My name's Brian O'Hair. Two comments I wanted to make. One was the first one that Gabby and Phil made with regards to what they shared with the indigenous history of this area. What I'd like to add to that is, in the past, I have made representation to figures within the community with regards to the fact that if you come here as a tourist, and I've been in the past worked in international tourism and am very well aware how interested people are in indigenous cultures. If you pick up the new brochure of Central Coast Tourism at the moment, I think they refer to cultural experiences as the cheese factory and possibly, I can't remember what they are. If you can find the word indigenous in that brochure, then I'll pay for a night in Gosford. It doesn't exist. And the other thing too tied up with that is, given the significance of the new ground there, and John, your mention of the love of building stadiums in Sydney, I don't know if anyone's ever actually looked long enough at the statement which says, build a community enabling futures or something, or the panels that are on the stadium. Find an indigenous image in that and you can get a second night at Gosford, because it doesn't exist. And that's been up there for years. I mean, mind you, I mean, if I was the Mariners, I probably would have said, well, the marketing would have helped to put the Mariners in there as well. The third thing with all of that is, I used to live and work in the States and was involved in tourism there, and particularly working around people's interest in Native American culture. And like here, their history and frontier experience is ugly only and nothing else. That said, if anywhere in the places that I lived and worked, you had Naasda centered on the coast, as you drive in here, as well as the Sister City arrangements, I'm sure, in fact, I know they would have, welcome to the Central Coast, home of Naasda. It doesn't exist. So there are any number of areas in terms of the indigenous lack of, and Gabby, you might be able to help me on this one, but as far as I know, Mount Yanggo is the most significant monolith between here and Uluru. Now, if any of those things, they just, none of it exists, it is invisible completely. So that wasn't going to be my original comment. The comment I'd make is, in terms of how things are unfolding here, and depending on where this is screened and how long the gag order is on me, I used to work for the consultancy that was looking after the interests of the company that is behind the removal of the railway line in Newcastle. And if you followed that, what's playing out here is exactly the same. The people that I would add to it besides the Property Council is an organisation called Urban Growth. And that's the death knell if they're involved. A couple of things I would add is that, in my experience up there, it really doesn't matter what side of government's in power if they've made the decisions that have been made. As you would, we would all know here, the cabal that was removed by the state government or on behalf of the state government here, the Liberal members and the ones in Newcastle, I'd be very surprised if there wasn't an excess between what happened here and how things are unfolding up there. The word warning I would give anybody is, in any meeting that you set up, if you are given the opportunity to speak to someone who is their stakeholder manager, run a mile, because whatever you say will be misrepresented. And who is, and the people running the council, I'm sure, I'm sure it's a done deal, and then everything will be reframed to fit the future, unless, as I think the lady said over here, that the message that's given to them is black and white, clear, short, succinct, along the lines of, this must not go ahead, we will not stand for it, and leave it at that.[1637.08][1637.08](APPLAUSE). Being kind about it and wanting to do the right thing, they will, I know, laugh at you when you walk away. And any questionnaires that go out, always double check who wrote them. I'll leave that one to think about. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a question over here.
What we really need to do is just put a moratorium on everything on that site. So we need to not have any development, everything has to cease. So we're not asking for, to talk with them about it, we're just asking for a cessation of every activity. The land's been sold, we can't stop that. What we're going to do now is stop development on that site until this has been solved. And so I'm not thinking on my feet as well, because I didn't bring any paper with me to write it down, but it needs to be very succinct.
All right, look, I am going to call... Graham, do you mind if I stop this now? Because I think it is eight o'clock and people do want to start to go. I'd just like to thank again John for coming up, so thank you very much, John.[1706.11][1706.11](APPLAUSE). Thank you to Phil and Gabby for sharing such heart-wrenching stories with us, and I just really love those, and we look forward very much to including the indigenous representation as part of the GWA. Thank you to all of those committee members, to Joy, to Kay, to Yelena, to Ange, to all of the others who are part of the GWA Alliance, and to Kevin. Thank you very much for all of your continuing work. Do please join the organisation on your way out. We also thank Bob again, and we thank Father Rod Bar again, because where would we be without him?[1753.03][1753.03](APPLAUSE). He is the unofficial mayor of Gosford, this man, because he runs the town hall. If Q and A ever came to Gosford, they would have to come to the Anglican Church, is all I can say. So thank you all very much, and we look forward, we will be in touch with any of you who've left your email with us, because we'll put that on the database, Yelena and Joy are on that. And if you do, if you don't want to join but also want to make a larger donation to the cause, we'd be very happy to receive that as well. Thank you very much and good evening.[1785.21][1785.21](APPLAUSE).